Good morning, everyone. It is nine o'clock on Tuesday, October 12th. And so everyone is in attendance. I will call the DICER committee of the whole meeting to order. And our first item will be, I'll ask our clerk Mallory Bishop to do a roll call.
Again?
Counselor Clark, you're here.
Present.
Counselor Donaldson?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Kennedy?
Present.
Counselor McEckney?
Present.
Counselor Smith?
Present.
And Counselor Wood Roberts is here. She's just off the screen for a second. And Mayor Roberts?
Present.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you. And let me just start quickly. I know we don't do announcements or whatnot on on committee the whole day, but Deputy Mayor Kennedy, it sure is nice to see your face on screen today. So welcome back.
Thank you. It's great to be back. Thanks. Looking forward to it.
Great. So first item is to adopt our agenda. If I could have a mover and a seconder for that, please. Counselor Clark and Counselor McEckney. You resolved that the agenda for the committee of the whole meeting held on October 12th, 2021 be approved as presented. All in favor? Okay, Carrie. I'll look to see if there's any disclosure of pecuniary interest or general nature thereof. And seeing none, we will look for an adoption of the minutes from our committee of the whole meeting on September 14th, if I may. Counselor Smith and seconded by Counselor McEckney. You resolved that the September 14th, 2021 committee of the whole minutes be approved as circulated. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. So we'll go into our first reports, which is from our fire chief. We'll bring Mike Isles into the meeting. Morning, Mike.
Good morning.
Okay, I'll let you speak to your report if you want to add anything here.
So first report is the standard monthly report. Just a couple of notes to comment about. We did assist the Halbertan Outdoors Association in cleaning the spawn bed in the Drag River. You might have seen the note or the information in the paper. And the other exciting news for us is we have six new volunteers that have started. So that's exciting. They've already attended a few calls. So great. Like we've got a great group of people that have come on board.
That's wonderful. And I saw those names there and you know, I just want to congratulate all those new recruits that want to serve for our DICER fire department. And it's also, I think, a great opportunity when you're training six together at the same time. You know, just instead of one at a time here and there, it's a good, good way to do training in sort of group training. So any questions to Mike on this report or comments? Seeing that, I'll look for a mover, seconder. Deputy Mayor Kennedy and seconded by Counselor Clark. You resolved that the committee of the whole acknowledges received the fire department report for September 2021. All in favor? Carrie's. And then you have a report. Or a bylaw coming forward.
The second is a report for the updated E and R bylaw. Hasn't been reviewed for a while. To the I guess the one, the one most important comment or the most important part about it, the bylaws, it spells out a little more explicitly what we do as our services. So it's a little better defined. One of the items had to change was our water access. So now that we have the training and we'll continue to do more training, we now have the ability to do a goal rescue with the new equipment we bought. So that allows us to physically enter the water to help rescue somebody ice water. So that had to be updated. And I also tried to embellish an update. We're getting a lot more gates and a lot more difficulty accessing properties. So I wanted that spelled out a little more clearly in the, in the bylaw that certainly gates are going to hinder and, and can be a a challenge for providing service. So.
Okay, and comments on this revised by law, Counselor Clark?
Yeah. Sir, you, Madam Mayor, yeah, Mike, interesting to get, you know, to get the thing brought back up to date. Are there any legal implications with regard to not being able to access a property? Anything we may have to do to, to protect ourselves? Or any, any thoughts that way?
That was my concern. And that's why I tried to add this bylaw so that, in hopes that that does give us a little bit of coverage. The bylaw states quite implicitly that it is a limited service because depends on weather, depends on response with the volunteers. And certainly depends on the access. So I tried to explicitly put gates there so that hope people are aware and understand that any sort of a gate impedes us and, and can cause time and a challenge to access a property.
Thanks, Mike.
Counselor Smith.
Yep, thank you. And that's like, it's a, I thought a, a quite a well-written document. I had a quick question, just following up to your comment on gates. So several years ago, when we were building our place, had a break in very early in the process. And, and as a result, I was evaluating putting a gate in. And amongst others, I spoke with my insurance company and they said, absolutely, gates are great. Anything to slow down the bad guys, make it difficult, they'll go somewhere else. So just for public information here, because you've referenced a couple of times now, what is your recommendation for people who do want to have a gate for security purposes? So that your fire department, in the event of emergency, can still get access to the property?
Quite honestly, my recommendation is do not have a gate if you're concerned about the access. To me, a gate that's closed, I just know there's nobody at the place. So to me, it invites the bad guys in. Hey, nobody's home. Come on in. Every gate has changed. Used to be as simple as a chain and a lock. So we could cut a chain. That has changed. Now there's, every time you look at a gate, it's a different mechanism. So for us to physically get into that scene, we have to somehow breach that gate. Yes, I have specifically purchased tools. In the past, all we carried was bolt cutters. That was simple. We could cut a lock, we could cut a chain. Locks now you cannot cut. That needs a grinder. We now carry a grinder. We now carry a sawzall. Some of our jaws, but regardless if we have the right tool and the ability to access that gate, it's still going to take us time to get that gate open and get equipment in. Sorry, I had another comment along that. My, oh, my other concern is that to me, it's, it's a no-brainer. I'm not responsible for repairing the gate, but I think the gates are a liability for the municipality. Because if I breach a gate, there's going to be concern about who, who repairs that gate. So gates are a genuine concern. And once again, no, no gates are good gates.
That said, though, with, excuse me, Counselor Smith's comments, people do have gates. And some of them are, are, you know, electric dependent or perhaps battery backup. But that I would suggest that that would be the homeowner's personal preference. And whether they do, is it possible still, though, if someone had a traditional gate with a lock that required a key or a code? Could they leave that with the fire department, such as they may leave that information with another service, fuel service, or you know, other tradespeople that might be coming?
Can, but I, I find that very challenging.
Okay.
I, I could end up with a suitcase full of keys and trying to sort of those keys for individual locks. A cataloging system, how I carry them, where I carry them. So, so even, even the electronic gates, it becomes a training issue even. The, some of them work by a siren, but it's got to be a specific siren. Do new staff know that? There's such a rollover staff and, and even to broaden the conversation, there's OPP and there's EMS. So there's a huge changeover staff. So to educate emergency staff as a whole on the gates and how they open, that's very challenging. So I understand Counselor Smith's question, but it's, it's very difficult to make it, make a gate that's, that's resistance to the bad guys, but leave a weak link or something that we can access with. So, so it is very challenging.
Okay, so up to the homeowner, they want to have a gate, they'll know that risk. If I could look for, yep. And mover and a seconder for this bylaw, Counselor Clark and Counselor McEckney. You resolved that the committee of the whole accepts the draft amendments to the bylaw for establishing and regulating the municipality of DICER at all fire department as written, and further recommends that the bylaw be brought to the October 26, 2021 council meeting for approval. All in favor? Okay, Carrie's. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, everybody.
Please congratulate the new recruits.
Yes, I will. Thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to move into public works. Lots in this section here. So we'll wait till we bring in our staff. I see Rob's in already. Well, staff are bringing in the other staff. I believe we can start with this one first item, which is a, which is a letter to council concerning about Cypress Road. Rob, did you want to comment on that?
Not much to comment on, quite honestly. You know, it never hurts to ask to have roads upgraded. I think council is familiar with this area. We just spoke about this a month or two ago, where this was a subdivision that had some financing concerns many years ago. And it turns out we were under servicing the area for about four decades. So all the roads in there are now year-round maintained roads. And this letter here is now asking that the municipality upgrade the road to the current standard. So the concern I have with this is this road is not unique. We have many roads in our network that are not up to the current standard. I'm not sure what the standard was forty-some-odd years ago, when this was supposed to be assumed into the network. But it does, it underscores the importance of, in these plans of subdivision, the agreements that are in place that we take and hold securities just for this purpose. You know, this was a failed subdivision that ultimately became the municipal liability that we took on with roads that weren't brought up to what our current day standards, and I'm not even sure they were brought up to the standard of the day forty years ago. So I will caution council, if we want to proceed with this, there are three other roads in that immediate area, four actually, that probably don't meet current day standards as well. And that's just the tip of the iceberg. So if we want to go around and bring up all of our roads to current day standards, it's I hate to say, it's probably unachievable, quite honestly, given the dollars that we're talking about.
Okay, fair enough. I'm sure there's going to be some questions. But one thing is, I don't think that what you, that, that would never happen on a go-forward basis because we'd either in a new plan, the subdivision, if that ever came to council, because we'd be looking at condominium roads, private roads, et cetera. Unless we knew that there would be the possibility that we would be able to have a road to today's municipal standard. So we don't, but we do have a little bit of an obligation. So currently, though, the only thing, and I'll open up to the floor after this, is that the resolution simply says that we received the letter. It doesn't give staff any direction. So I think, you know, we need to know some, a little, give staff a bit of direction. Rob?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm still waiting on a survey of the area to determine if the roads are even on our property or on the road allowance. So until that's determined, I don't think you want to entertain any capital upgrades.
No, but at this, I was just reading the resolution as Mallory was nodding. It simply just says we received. So I just, as long as we know staff are continuing with this request to get further information. Questions from Counselor Smith? Go ahead.
Thank you. And thanks, Rob. You had mentioned the survey and the possibility of blasting. As you know well, from having been out there and we've talked about it, there's a main concern, I would say, for the residents on the road and not just for the lady that sent the letter, but frankly, all the residents of the road I've talked to is the thing they call heart attack hill. And so for those that haven't been on this, this road has a fairly steep hill. And, and so for cars coming in or going out as they approach the peak of the hill, they can't see the, in the opposite direction. And, and so there's concern about the risk. It's so narrow, you know, because of the rock at the side. And I, I think your hope is that, oh, if the survey gives you the information, you hope that the roads on our property, there's a possibility you might be able to do some blasting. Is that true?
Yeah, the blasting is more for drainage. I'm not sure we're in a position to take the whole hill down. Again, it depends on the amount of property we have. And to change the grade of a road in there, it, it's going to be very expensive. And again, it's not unique. We do have other areas certainly up there. Bitter Lake Road itself needs some ditch lines blasted out. You know, there's some pretty nasty hills even on Watts Road and North Kinesis Lake Road too. So I just want to stress the importance that although it's not ideal, it's not unique. And if it's something we do want to tackle, then we're going to need very clear direction and a very narrow scope on that, I think.
Yeah, yeah. Not advocating that we do that. I'm just following up your previous comment. And I've certainly stressed to all of these people that there are several others. You mentioned a couple around Kinesis, and there are others that, you know, have equal challenges. But that's the, the concern that, you know, these, these property owners all have. You know, they look at their own road as, as obviously a priority. There is and has been more development in that area in, in recent years with a new place is opening up on Mansfield. Although it's a private road, they all depend upon Cypress to know. And, and then in addition, you know, with people now being here more often, I think the, the impetus for this particular letter was as a result of this lady not being able to get out on a Sunday evening. So the, the drainage problems in the area created such a rut in the road, it was impassable. And, and so in frustration, she fired off this, this particular letter. And in fairness, that was a Sunday evening. Jeff or his crew or somebody was out there early Monday morning, because when I was drove down on, on Monday morning to have a look personally at eight thirty, repairs had already been completed. So, you know, it was a good effort there. But again, it just demonstrates the nature of the fragile nature of the road, if you like. And, and if you're able to do something with that drainage, it's, it's going to make a big difference. Thank you.
Counselor Clark?
Yes, for you, Madam Mayor. Thanks, Rob. I think as you've alluded to, there, there's a number of roads that are in that same category. And I think as, as you've already pointed out, once we go to fix one road, we're also on the hope for a bunch more. I think as, and then, and those big dollar figures that are involved. I, what I do think, though, perhaps is to, to consider going forward and back to us with is, is a at least an assessment as to what, what, you know, what the number of roads are and kind of what the, the workload or, or what needs to be done to bring them in. And then if, if need be, then over a ten-year period, where we develop a strategy to bring these things up to to stuff, because it sounds like at some point in time, we're going to have to deal with it. But it'd be nice to have at least some, some planning in our back pocket in case some grants can be available, or if there's an opportunity for you know, putting a bit of money aside each year to, to address this, this liability that we have. Be good to hit the planning upfront anyway. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Clark. Mallory, is there something I should be adding or we should be adding to the resolution? Otherwise, staff don't really have clear direction.
We can add that staff be directed to return to a future meeting with an update after the survey's been completed of Cypress Road?
I think that's an excellent addition.
Yeah, at that point, Rob will have an idea of what we own going forward.
Okay, so I would look then for a mover and a seconder for this, and I'll read the full resolution. Counselor, our Deputy Mayor Kennedy and Counselor McEckney. You resolved that the committee of the whole acknowledges received the letter sent by Mary Ann Heaton, I'm not sure how to pronounce it, pardon me, Thomas, requesting that Cypress Road be brought up to municipal standard and further that.
And further direct staff to return to a future committee meeting with an update on Cypress Road after a survey of the area has been completed.
Okay, so in tandem, you heard the whole resolution. All in favor? Okay, Carrie. Thank you, Mallory, for always wordsmithing on the fly there. Next, we have a letter from some Bitter Lake residents requesting us to change the speed limit.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So you're looking at a petition, again, in the same area to lower the speed limit to forty kilometers an hour. So forty kilometers an hour is the lowest posted speed that we can go down to. The, my concern with this is when we were talking about speed limits earlier in the summer, specifically around Halberton Lake, is we were going to be piecemealing speed bylaws together to cover the municipality. And it looks like that's kind of the way this is headed now. We're getting little bits and pieces from different areas of the municipality. So if council wants to entertain lowering the speed limit, that, that's, that's fine by me. But I do seek direction from council, whether we should be looking at the bigger picture now as opposed to piecemealing these speed bylaws together as, you know, months and years move on.
I concur. You know, if, if we, we talked about even within the town, the street that I live on, you know, is technically fifty kilometers, but I hope nobody's driving fifty kilometers on our road. We have the same issue, people walking and jogging and et cetera. Walking with their pets. So to, I, I don't think that we, while we respect this concern, I think it would be, you know, we have, we go back to, are we going to change the speed limit on municipal roads in general, or just wait till we get a request and change it here, there, and everywhere? What's the rest of council? Lots to hand. Oh, can I just let Rob answer and then I'll go to Smith and Counselor Clark?
Yeah, I just want to circle back to something that has come up in council probably a couple of times, not in great detail. But we have mentioned the, the prospect of a speed area that is now part of the Highway Traffic Act, where you can basically pass a bylaw and it has to be forty kilometers an hour. And as you enter into a neighborhood, Bitter Lake Road, for instance, we could post a sign that says forty kilometers an hour, and it has a little tab under it that says area. So the intent behind that is as long as, as soon as you pass that, every road that you drive on is forty kilometers an hour, whether it's posted or not. And until you pass a sign that says speed area ends, you are in that forty kilometers an hour zone. So I don't know what the appetite would be like to experiment with a speed area up here. People want to see the signs. The advantage for me is you don't need so many signs up. So moving forward, if that's something we want to take a look at, we could have a trial area, whether it be Bitter Lake, I don't know. But it would certainly save on some signage. And, you know, whether people pay attention to the speed area signs or not, I really couldn't tell you. They're not, they haven't gained, gained a lot of traction, but they are out there.
Okay, thank you. And Counselor Smith was first and then to Counselor Clark second.
Yep, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. So like, again, this is in the same area, but it's a different group of residents, if you like, to put this petition together. They're mainly on Bitter Lake Road and then private roads, Piccadilly and so forth that run off that. And, and, and like many others in our community, speeding is a, a huge concern in their area. And, and Rob, so first maybe I might ask you a question. You know, as you know, coming up Kinesis Lake Road, there are several signs telling you the speed limit is eighty kilometers per hour. When you turn right onto Bitter Lake Road, there are no speed signs. So, you know, and it's not a built-up community. There are several cottages there, but it's not clearly an urban area. As a result, I believe under the Highway Traffic Act, the speed limit, you know, from an OPP enforcement point of view, on this road, Bitter Lake Road, is actually eighty kilometers an hour. Is that correct?
That's how I interpret it, yes.
Oh, you know, Madam Mayor, council, that's a particular concern. You know, and Rob and I talked about this situation the, the day that this petition arrived. You know, it's hard for us to imagine somebody going much over fifty on Bitter Lake Road. But they do. And that's what, you know, alarms the people that live there. And, you know, so they've chosen to ask for forty. We had, they're not, you know, they're not part of a lake association. The gentleman that, you know, initially organized this petition and, and put it together, doesn't live on the, on the lake. He's got a woodlot, you know, that's on Bitter Lake Road and but relatively early in Bitter Lake Road. And so he sees this problem. And the others that live in the area see the same problem. It's, you know, the phrase that it's those BMWs that go scooting by here on weekends at ridiculous speeds. And, you know, legally, those people aren't speeding, even if they're doing seventy on a road that we can't imagine going much over fifty. And, and so whether it's signs on every road, some action I think is needed by our council, you know, on behalf of our community to ensure that, that people understand at least the legal speed limit. And right now, the legal speed limit on Bitter Lake Road is eighty kilometers an hour. You know, ninety percent of the people go much slower than that, but there are a few people that are, you know, going too fast. And, and that's problematic. And I, and I think we need to act on that in one way or another. We've talked about these community safety zones for a year more now. And, but we haven't made much progress. So, you know, these folks have seen that we've acted in other areas. Alberton Lake Road, we, we responded to a letter and we put up a bunch of signs. You know, I don't know how many signs would be needed in this particular area, but at least one when you came off of of Kinesis Lake Road, saying you're now going from an eighty into a fifty would, would be, I think, a big help.
Okay, Counselor Smith.
They're asking, they're asking that it be forty. But start and, you know, as simple as that. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, no, you've made your point. Counselor Clark, you were next.
Yeah, just, just to support what Rob's saying, that's a, that's a, seems like a good solution, where you can put a sign in the start of an area at the forty. But if, if that's not feasible and we're working within, you know, guidelines on the fifty, perhaps additional signs around the sensitivity of some of these areas, you know, where there's walkers or there's children playing or that kind of thing. Just to make people alert that, you know, the, the, the roads have, have liabilities or, or some exposure to them on, on people using them, like walking and jogging. So at least you're making, making the communities aware that, that, you know, they have to drive with care based on, on what they're seeing. They have to be, you know, there's, there's a need for attention. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Clark. Just for clarification, I, I did not know that it meant that turning off of Kinesis Lake Road, or yeah, Kinesis Lake Road, the county road, onto that road, if there isn't a sign that the speed limit is still the speed limit that you've been going, what is the difference between putting a posted one sign at the beginning, if we maintain that all municipal roads, just, just say, is fifty, as opposed to putting speed area and forty? What, what's the difference? Why would you need further signs down the road? Is that because of the policy that you have to have for speed limits as opposed to speed areas, sign so many distant apart?
Yeah. And in all honesty, I've kind of lost touch with that portion of the Highway Traffic Act. I've read it numerous times, but it never sticks with me. My concern through there is you do have some public side roads on there. So if you do have the, the spur roads Um, my concern through there is you do have some public side roads on there. So if you do have the, the spur roads, say, um, Told Rush or Cypress, for instance, if you don't have speed signs either side of them, people could claim ignorance as they pull off of it and head back out towards the county road.
So perhaps, uh, coming back to council again, uh, Mallory, through you, maybe we could just add a little, uh, note at the end of this resolution that staff come back with a report, because I think we need to know the difference between just posting some fifty kilometer uh, signs and what would be involved with there as a, as opposed to what would be involved with limiting the whole area and calling it a speed area. Is that okay with the rest of council? Because I, I don't want to make a snap decision, uh, when we don't know all the information at this time. And not just the financial cost of something, but also, uh, the, you know, the full implication of what that would mean. Councilor Smith, did you raise your hand? Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. I think if we could establish a, a timeline in which, uh, you know, Rob or, or other staff are going to come back with, uh, a, a report and potential recommendation. Um, you know, uh, we've talked about speeding and we'll talk about it again, uh, uh, with the speed radar. It's a, a problem throughout our community. Um, and most of our residents would say, make the speed limits much lower than they are because people will go faster than whatever you post. And, um, but we've at least got a responsibility and obligation to post something, uh, to have so many of these roads actually legally be eighty kilometers an hour. Cause most of our roads run off, or spur road off a county road, and the county roads are signed and most of our roads are not. And, um, that's, that's a huge issue, uh, in my opinion, and, and something that we have an obligation to, uh, to act on. Um, and Rob should present, and I'd like to see something, uh, you know, not at October council, but let's put a time on it and say it's in November council. And, um, and I personally would advocate for lower speed limits, uh, to, uh, the greatest degree possible on our roads. Our roads are not highways. Uh, they're all local roads and, uh, they're roads that people are walking and cycling on, and they want to be protected. Right now, they don't feel safe. Thank you.
Okay. Rob, is that possible to bring back, uh, to the November? I think it has to come back to committee before it comes to council, has to come back to committee. So he's nodding. Mallory, is there something you can, uh, craft to add at the end of that?
So we're not just seeing on Bitter Lake Road, then we're, we're looking for a report that explains the difference between changing the speed limit versus, uh, creating a speed area, I assume, in general?
I'm just uncomfortable with the time limit because I know what staff are heading into right now with budgets and everything else going on and struggling to use up vacation. And I don't know that that time limit is realistic for Rob.
So let's not put a timeline in the resolution and we just went, you know, it, it is important and I don't, again, uh, when I read the resolution as it sits right here, all it says is that we were, we're receiving it. We're not acting on it. So I, I do want to have something in the resolution, uh, because currently their request is to lower the speed limit to forty kilometers. Well, maybe we shouldn't be, now Rob has come up with a potential solution is calling it a speed area. So Mallory, is there something that we can add to the end of this without necessarily putting a strict timeline on it, but the, the, I think we need to know the difference between in a little more detail to speed areas and what would be involved with posting?
Yeah, I, I can read something. Does that work? Oh, did you?
No, I, why don't we read, can you read the resolution from the top then? And then I'll look for a mover and a seconder and see if we can go forward on that.
Sure. Um, be it resulted that the committee, the whole acknowledges received a petition from residents and visitors at Bitter Lake Road, requesting this, the speed limit be lowered to forty kilometers per hour and further direct staff to return to a committee meeting with a report explaining the difference between changing the speed limit versus creating speed areas on roads.
So do I have a mover and a seconder for that resolution as is read? Was that Councilor Smith and Councilor Clark? So you've heard the resolution all in favor? Okay, so that carried as written. Thank you, Mallory, again. Okay. Um, next is summer operations summary. So Jeff, are you, uh, taking us through this?
Morning, everyone. Uh, so summer construction season's coming to an end. We're finally got everything pretty well wrapped up that was in the capital. Uh, it turned out well on time and as well. Um, uh, we got one little piece left of the North Kinesis Lake Road that we started, but haven't quite finished up yet. We're going to continue working on that later this week. Uh, summer maintenance is going to continue as long as the weather allows, fixing the holes, potholes and small washes that keep coming up. And we're starting to get ready for winter season. I know nobody wants to hear about it, but winter sand on the yard now ready to go. And we have one truck ready to go out on the road all ready for winter, and we're going to start continuing with the rest of them this week and next. And that's about all.
Okay, well, we may not want to hear about it, but we sure are happy that the roads department know what, that, that they're getting ready because it will come. Um, any questions to Jeff on summer maintenance? Uh, Councilor Wood Roberts, go ahead.
I just wondered if, um, there's going to be any more brushing done in town on some of the corners and hills.
Uh, the stuff in town's completed for the year. We did quite a bit on some of the back streets. Did you have anything in mind that?
Well, I haven't actually been able to get out and go around, but there was just a couple of corners and stuff, so I can just send, I can just email you those.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, sometimes it's not a whole stretch of a, a road. It just may be one actual little, like you say, one little bend in the corner or something like that. So if you can, if, if you hear of anything in word one that needs attention, yeah, okay, so I'll look for mover, seconder to receive their report. Councilor Smith?
I'm happy to move it. I, I had a question also.
Certainly.
Thank you. And, and, uh, and Jeff, first, uh, uh, thanks. Uh, I know we've, uh, promised it for a number of years, but, uh, uh, thanks for this year, uh, getting out to, uh, uh, Kinesis Lake Road and, and getting some of the work started. I was over there yesterday and, and I knew you've got a good start down near the dam and you know there's a ways to go yet, but, uh, uh, we've been promising that one for a long time. So thanks for getting that. Um, the other area that I've had a, an awful lot of, uh, concern expressed about, uh, um, you know, much through the summer, but also more recently is Watts Road. Um, you know, there's, uh, a couple of stretches of Watts Road, uh, that are in particularly bad shape and that one, uh, uh, there at the, you know, I forgot the name of the hill, but near twenty-nine eleven Watts Road. You've got about six pylons and, uh, obstructions out there right now, kind of because, uh, rocks are popping up and so forth. Are you going to be able to get any work done on that, um, you know, before winter?
I'm hoping to get to that one later this week or next week as well. Um, we have to do a bit of a dig out there. Like you said, the rocks just keep coming up through and we can't really do much unless we dig it and put some better stuff back.
All right, so, um, is that, you know, uh, the weather forecast for the next two weeks doesn't have any snow in it, so, uh, um, to those people that have been complaining to me, can I give them a, a pretty strong possibility that you're have some heavy equipment out there, uh, uh, the next couple of weeks?
I'll do my best, yes.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, uh, Councilor Smith. So I do have it moved by Councilor Smith. I'll need a seconder, please. Uh, Councilor Wood Roberts. It resulted that the committee, the whole received the summer operations report for information. All in favor? Great. Okay, thanks. Um, yeah, and this extra nice weather is a bonus here, that's for sure. Uh, so now we go to public work status update. Rob, you're taking us through that briefly?
Uh, yes. Um, so the biggest change on here would be the addition of some, uh, completed road resurfacing. So uh, the last committee meeting we were at, none of the, uh, full resurfacing had been completed. So all but two roads are done now. Um, being Peppermint and Betty Road out east. So Miller is back in the area and they're working in that area um, today, actually. So I'm hoping this week it will be done. They're doing some work for the county out there as well. One road that I did defer putting a surface on, um, was Outlet Bay Road, excuse me, off of Fred Jones. And that's because they are doing some dam reconstruction down there and they are hauling equipment in and out. So the, the gravel's been done, it's been ditched. We're just going to hold off on putting the surface on until next year, um, when we do our resurfacing program again. The, uh, I highlighted an item here for waste disposal sites, the roll-off bins that we ordered earlier in the year. And that we had come into a bit of a hiccup with that. Um, John Watson would be able to explain it a little in greater detail. Um, fortunately, he's not on the screen right now. But there was a mix-up probably between both parties in that they didn't recall getting our order. And on our end, we didn't follow up after we didn't hear anything for a while. So because of that, the, uh, when John did talk to them, the prices, they were unable to hold their prices. So basically, when we thought we were overpaying upfront, we were going to be paying through the nose to get these bins. Um, and we wouldn't be getting them this year. Uh, oh, and there's John on the screen now.
Yeah.
So John and I were talking earlier and we thought it'd be a good, uh, a good time to reflect now that we know when we are transitioning to the new blue box program. And how many of these bins do we truly need now? Do we need all of them? Um, we are going to need some additional ones for garbage, garbage haulage. Um, but until we really know what our transition looks like, it may be a good opportunity to kind of reevaluate what we need for bins moving forward. Um, John, uh, Watson, if you wanted to hop on that, if I missed anything, feel free to, uh, set it straight.
Yeah, you've definitely covered most of it. Um, I think as well, currently our, our current, uh, hauler is able to provide us with rental bins, which is quite cost-effective, um, if you look at the daily fees for those. Um, and it gives us an opportunity to really understand what our obligations will be under a transition program. Um, that will happen in a few years. It gives us an opportunity as well to explore maybe joint procurement with the other lower tier municipalities in the county as well.
Okay, so Rob, go ahead.
Yeah, and I, I just wanted to follow up. So the money that we had set aside this year, we'll be proposing that we carry forward to next year, um, and we can reevaluate at that point.
Okay, thank you for that explanation highlight. Um, is there anything else you want to highlight before I open it up to the floor? I'll just see if Rob wants to highlight anything else in here.
Uh, no, if I missed anything, I'm sure I'll get questions on it.
Well, I just want to say that is a very, very lengthy, uh, amount of roads that we did this year. So I think we are very much moving forward with maintaining and, uh, and looking after our roads and our giant network of, of roads that Dyserd has. Councilor Smith, you had a question?
I did, thanks. And just to follow up that, that comment, uh, um, there are a number of small roads that were completed this year, so the list is long, but, um, um, many residents would point out that there are many roads that are in terrible, unacceptable and, um, and so, uh, we need to continue, uh, to, to focus on, uh, uh, improving roads and, uh, and getting roads that are in poor condition, uh, back to an acceptable level. Rob, there was, uh, um, a comment in your, uh, your report there, you said, uh, brushing is identified as an area of need. Um, and, um, you know, I've spoken with you and Jeff a number of times about, uh, um, concerns that have been expressed to me that some are about brushing and, and some you were able to address and, and some didn't get done. Uh, but, uh, what do you mean by, when you say brushing is identified as an area of need?
I'm sorry, I lost you just the tail end there.
Well, what do you, when your report says brushing is identified as an area of need, what are, what are you suggesting? What's that going to lead to?
Uh, well, we do have a level of service policy and basically it identifies when we need to brush our roads. Um, off the top of my head, basically, once brush reaches a point four meters from the center of the road, we, we strive to, um, have the mechanical, mechanical brusher out there within two years of it being four meters from the center of the road. Now, we do have some catching up to do. Um, I, off the top of my head, I think we were backlogged about a hundred kilometers at the start of this year. We got a very good jump on that. And we will be proposing that we do, you know, probably around the same amount again this year, um, in hopes of getting down to that seven-year cycle generally across the network.
So, uh, folks that have concerns can, uh, uh, look for more progress in the coming year.
Yeah, um, the, the, the issue we have is a lot of our roads aren't eight meters wide. So four meters from the center line of the road is out over the shoulder and we get quite a few complaints, you know, from not so much for the, the brush being at the, the edge of the pavement, but beyond there, you know, up to four or five feet. Um, people have concerns looking through the corners. So whether we want to look at our level of service and step that up a little bit, we can certainly look at that. But I want to make sure we can certainly maintain what we're doing now before we look at, uh, expanding it.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I, I don't know if it's for Rob, maybe it's, uh, for Tamara, but this experience with these, uh, bins, I mean, uh, um, you know, we're trying to rationalize here why the failure to execute on our plan is a, is turning out to our advantage or maybe a good thing. Uh, but it is concerned that we could make a, uh, um, you know, a budget commitment, plead a, a request for tender, award the, uh, you know, the, uh, business to, uh, um, you know, capital disposal equipment, uh, as I recall, quite early in the year. And somehow we didn't get around to ordering, um, you know, the product that we, uh, intended to purchase. Um, and, and so, um, you know, I'd, I'd like to think that there's going to be some sort of, uh, review uh, and certainty that, um, you know, that kind of, uh, you know, process, uh, failure breakdown, whatever happened, um, that it, you know, doesn't get repeated.
Mayor, do you want to?
I have no comment for that right now.
That's fine. Um, Councilor Smith, you made a comment early on and I, I should have written it down because I don't want to misquote you, but I believe you said that that some, many of our people feel that our roads are in dire situation. I just want to clarify or quantify that, that that is a personal uh, opinion. It is, I, I, we, is not based on any data, uh, or where, where our roads, perhaps a road is coming up for resurfacing or, or treatment. We all, we maintain that. Um, so I, I just a little frustrated with the comment that, that that's a personal opinion.
Well, it's, it's not just a personal opinion, uh, uh, you know, I come out and drive out on East U Road, for example, and ask yourself if that's a road that's in acceptable condition. And it was a road that, uh, that, you know, was initially on the list for work in twenty-twenty-two, but as a result of a decision in council, it didn't get done. And, um, and by whatever measurement, the PCI measurement would say that road in very poor condition. Um, and, um, and as simple as that. And it's, it's not alone, but it just happens to be one that I had an email about yesterday. I can pass along the email if you like, and I don't worry, it's very clear. That road's in unacceptable condition.
Well, Councilor McKechnie?
Yeah, um, first of all, I'd like to comment on, uh, the bins. Um, like, it's not a life-threatening issue. I don't know why we're making such a big issue. It doesn't happen very often. I think our departments and our staff do a great job following up on things. Something's up through the cracks. Um, so I don't know why we're wasting so much time on that. Secondly, I think I'm out of order by saying this, but I'm going to say it. I've got a list here for Jeff and Rob too, of the last day, three or four days, people commenting on, on my roads. I'm not of order by, because it's not on the agenda. So let's stick to the agenda, please. Uh, I, I'll get ahold of Jeff and Rob another time here shortly and, uh, present my list. I mean, thank you.
Uh, I did have a question just on the, uh, capital work under some of the sidewalks. We deferred the Highland Street, uh, it says carryover from twenty-twenty. I know that they're doing work along the, um, the walkway from the town dock to County Road one and in front of the high school, and, uh, they're doing a great job so far with the, obviously the takeaway. I just wondered, are, are we going to continue those two sections, the Highland Street and what was happening with the sunny side?
That is the hope. Um, my concern is we're going to run out of weather, but I walked it with them last week and that is the hope is to do that work as well.
Okay, thank you. So it is weather dependent. Um, um, yeah, okay. Any other questions on this report? If not, I'll look for a mover, seconder, please. Councilor Clark, Councilor Wood Roberts. It resulted that the committee, the whole received and acknowledged this report regarding public work status. We resolved that the committee, the whole receive and acknowledge this report regarding public work status updates as information. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Oh, something fun again too is the speed radar signs.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Not really a whole lot to say on this one, just a continuation on the same report we've been looking at for a few months. I did send this copy down to the local detachment of the OPP and they did acknowledge receipt.
Hey, thank you. Really, just to receive if I'm thank you for sending it on to OPP mover second or then? Deputy Mayor Kennedy and sorry, I saw lots of hands. Counselor Clark. We resolved that the committee, the whole receive and acknowledge this report regarding the 2021 speed radar program as information. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Connecting link program.
Yes, thank you. So connecting links program that comes out every year. You know, it provides funding to do, you know, some maintenance operations, some investigative work and ultimately reconstruction rehabilitation of connecting links. We were unsuccessful last year for this exact same project, which be CCTV inspection of our storm system throughout the 1.3 kilometers. So I'm recommending that we resubmit for that same project. Last year, we asked for about $38,000. I built a bit more of a buffer in this year because costs will be going up. So basically, once we have this work done, we'll be in pretty good shape as far as doing some detailed design on the connecting link. You know, hopefully in 2022, 2023, or 2023, sorry, we can apply for some detailed engineering on it. The sanitary system in the area is cameraed as part of our maintenance on the wastewater plant. So we don't need to include that in this project. It will be storm water only.
Okay. Mover second or then, or unless there was a question, I can't see, you know, Counselor Wood Roberts. Okay, and a seconded by Counselor Smith. We resolved that the committee receives and acknowledges this report regarding the 2022-23 connecting links program as information. And that the committee recommends that council authorized staff to apply to the program for the provision of CCTV inspection of its storm sewer network within the limits of the municipal connecting link along provincial highway 118. And that the municipal funding portion be included in the 2022 municipal budget. And that upon successful application, the work be completed in 2022. All in favor? Okay, that carries. And Ilmen Road.
Yeah, so this is a follow-up file from 2020, I believe. Basically, the developer has met the requirements that we had asked them to do to assume a portion of Ilmen Road. It is desirable from our standpoint because it does provide a proper turnaround for our snowplow now. Beforehand, we were using private property to turn around. So this just kind of cleans it up a little bit for both parties.
That's great. Okay, if there aren't questions, then I'll just look to move and second it. Somebody on the board, Counselor Clark and Counselor McCackney. We resolved that the committee recommend council assume a portion of Ilmen Road into municipal highway system for public use. And that the bylaw to assume a portion of Ilmen Road into municipal highway system be brought to the October council meeting for approval. All in favor? Hey, Carrie. And this is something I didn't think we'd see is approval for a delivery truck a year and a half from now. We used to think we were being very proactive if we went out, you know, eight months, nine months, and now it's like a year and a half. Do you want to speak to this, Rob?
Yeah, once upon a time, you could get a snowplow in about eight months. Those days are over for the foreseeable future. So we do have two trucks on order now. One was expected three months ago. We are now on month 17. I've been assured the truck exists. People have put their hand on it. So I've had it not been COVID, I would literally drive down and take a picture with it to show you. But here we are. They are putting the cameras on it right now. So, you know, hopefully in the next week or so, it will come through our gates, which is good. Because it will be pushing snow sooner than we hope. The the concern we have, and I've spoken with the outfitter, the snowplow equipment, is the cabin chassis manufacturers are running into the same issues that the light trucks are running into is there's a shortage on microprocessors. So from what I understand is the limited amount they have is they're literally putting into the truck to take the truck out of the plant and park it and take that chip and get it into the next truck to get it into the parking lot. So at some point, there's going to be a shortage of cabin chassis. And once they get the microprocessor straightened out, there will be a flood of cabin chassis at these outfitters at their locations. So I think it's prudent on our part to basically hold our spot in line. So when that time does come, at least we have a number. And we'll have a better idea when it will be here. If we if we were to order one right now, we may get it, you know, towards the end of 2023. So I think it's proven on our part to, you know, let's get in the queue and get these things ordered because they do take so long to get here.
Any questions on that? Comments? Again, I think it's being very proactive and it meets our asset management plan for vehicles and it's it's just hopefully it won't always be like this, but there's supply chain issues across the world for all kinds of things. So I'll look then for a mover and a second or to approve. Counselor Wood Roberts and seconded by Counselor Donaldson. We resolved that the committee recommend the council authorized staff to release a request for tender for one tandem axle truck with snowplow equipment. And that the delivery of truck shall be scheduled for delivery in 2023. And that the purchase of the truck be included in the 2023 municipal budget. All in favor? Carrie. Not in a funny way. Okay, John, I guess this will be you, which is third quarter landfill revenue.
So in July, August and September of this year, Dyser's landfills generated 169,819 dollars in tipping fee revenue. An additional 46,000 was received in scrap metal revenue. Pre-approved credit accounts are slightly down compared to 2020 or compared to the previous year. However, some of those accounts have actually switched to paying every single transaction by credit card so they can access the points on their credit cards. And just as an FYI, we've recently added the Halbert Welcome Center as a location to purchase one-time landfill passes for shorter renters.
Okay, I'm wondering that last last thing that you just referenced, which I thought was a great idea. Have we gone to our local cottage rental agencies? And let them know that that's where people can purchase the one-time landfill cards?
We haven't yet, but that's definitely something we can do. It's it was just a recent development that we've done this. And they've already sold a few, so we know people are definitely using that as a location to pick them up. So we could do that outreach for sure.
Okay, because there are some some great agencies that are are quite local to to us. Any questions on the landfill? Revenue, Counselor Smith?
Thank you. So John, you've reported here on the on the revenue and and so you know, total tipping fees, for example, 424,000 year to date compared to 319,000 in 2020. You know, that's the positive side in terms of revenue. What are the cost implications of this? You know, you've got an increase there of of almost one-third on the on the tipping fees. What are the cost implications of that? Because we have to do something with that garbage.
Yeah, I haven't prepared the expense side of this, so I have to work with Barbara to come back with to you with some of the expenses. Traditionally, we've only reported on the revenue.
All right. But seeing to me that you know, the getting both of those the plus and minus side of it, like on this report would be would be helpful. I also wondered if there if there might be some metrics other than, you know, expense dollars. For example, it, you know, we had an environment committee, we used to get some information regarding the a volume of the number of containers, if you like, of of waste that needed to be hauled away, the same with recycling. That would give us some indication of of the volume of material we're dealing with, but also you know, when you start measuring things. It gives you a way to reflect on the impact of of changes you implement or or gives you a way to judge the success of the educational programs that you do through social media and so forth. And so without getting more specific, I guess, just encourage you to think about other ways of measuring the landfill activity beyond tipping fees. And because, as they say in the world, that what gets measured is is what, you know, gets done, it's what improves, it's how you improve things. On another point, I was I was curious about that concept that you mentioned briefly verbally that you know, people are are no longer setting up credit accounts or certainly reducing the credit account activity and using their credit card to pay at the landfill and so they can earn points. They may earn points, but we have to pay then credit card fees because presumably with their credit account, we didn't accept payment there by credit card. You know, and all the local businesses would tell us about the impact of of credit card fees on on their expense structure. And and so I'm wondering, is this something that we want to encourage or should we find it, try to think about a strategy to maybe discourage use of credit cards by, you know, organizations that bring us a lot of waste?
Maybe I'll turn that to Barbara, I would think, because that's the financial side of it. And also to your point about John is providing a report that has been a typical report. If we want something different, I think we'd have to give clear direction on what that is. And so Barbara, not to take away from you, John, but maybe I'll just turn that over. It's the financial side. Is that okay?
Yes. So as far as credit card fees go, definitely, there there is a fee for the municipality to offer the electronic payment service at this point relatively new for 2021. I haven't analyzed the impact. Definitely will take a look at that as we prepare for our 2022 budget and reviewing the 2021 results.
And in terms of a different report, Barbara, that Counselor Smith requested. You know, we're looking at the the revenue, but you know, right away in my head, I'm thinking, well, the expense is going to be up there too, because anything that's going in and people are paying the tipping, that's going out. So I'm sure that the expense is right up there.
Yeah, so there is some value to that reporting. I do recommend that we complete that for a full 12-month cycle and just to eliminate any activity due to seasonality.
So I think that's fair, Counselor Smith, is that we we look at it on an annual year over year as opposed to because also depending on the time when when the tipping fees are coming in sort of, let's say, daily, but the expenses may be coming out over two months or different. So we may have some real peaks and valleys that don't actually make sense. I think would make definite sense to review it after the full calendar year. And which we do really go through when we look at the budget, but we can ask that for a specific report if that's okay.
Well, it's up to council, but I I just, as I said, I think there's value in in looking at the at the full picture and that involves does end and revenues here. But I'm I'd be happy to have a report at the end of the year and we can see this and and then maybe define what we need going forward. And the same thing on the credit card. You know, later on, we've got a a report on, you know, some of the fees in municipality. I noticed, for example, if you want to get a marriage license from Dyser, the fee's $100. We don't accept credit cards for that according to our bylaw. You have to pay by cash. Check or something else, but we do. We don't offer credit cards there. So you know, it's it just something I think it's as Barbara pointed out, it's new for us. But, you know, credit card expenses are are very expensive for the organizations receiving it. And if we can find strategies that helps us minimize credit card fees, that's that's going to be good for our taxpayers. Thank you.
Okay, Tamara, want to join in? Join in?
Yeah, I just wanted to note that the credit card topic is a whole different discussion. It's something that affects every department and every fee. And we've been working on through the service delivery review recommendations in terms of customer service. Making things more available online. So I think it's it's a much bigger discussion for another day. It's something we've been working towards. In terms of managing the impacts on the municipality as well, but I think it's not a discussion to continue right now perhaps.
Okay. So with that said, I will look for a mover in a second or to receive the third quarter landfill revenue summary. And Counselor McCackney and seconded by Counselor Clark. We resolved that the committee, the whole acknowledges received the 2021 third quarter landfill revenue summary. All in favor? Okay, Carrie. And next, the food waste organics update.
So this is just a summary of activity from July to September of this year regarding food waste organics. In the summer, we did a fair amount of promotion of back air composting and digesters, including producing some videos with our summer student. We're doing some videos about mulching coming up around leaves. In September, I attended a municipal Waste Association Organics Committee. There were two interesting presentations, one from Food Rescue South Muskoka, which was a nonprofit that coordinates efforts of grocery stores and restaurants to redistribute non-perishable and perishable food to food security organizations like food banks and community kitchens. And then the second presentation was from the Ontario Food Collaborative that promotes food security and nutrition literacy. And this organization has extensive information on waste composition studies. So we actually incorporated some of that information into our waste composition RFP that closes today. So that we could get some really good information about leftover food, untouched food, unavoidable food waste. So we'll have some really good metrics coming out of our waste composition studies later this year.
That's great. Thank you for that update. Any questions, comments? Counselor Clark, did you?
Yeah, and an interesting article in the Globe in the weekend, and they're talking about the fact that there's twice as many food banks as there are grocery stores. It's it's a various sad content I was having with our society, the amount of poverty that we're we're trying to deal with and people struggling. So we, anything we can do to to streamline or make things easier for families. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Smith?
Thank you. John, to follow up to a previous report of yours. Council had asked you to reach out to the city of Peterborough with respect to you know, our organics program that they were embarking on. Did you do that? And and more importantly, what reaction did you get from them? Are they, you know, interested in getting us on board or where does that stand?
Yes, I've spoken to my colleagues at the city of Peterborough, so they are aware of Dyser's interest in starting a back in a food waste composting program and potentially using their facility. They obviously don't know what the cost will be to operate, like in terms of selling their capacity to us. So it's still kind of preliminary at this time until we know what they're what the tipping fee essentially would be for us to bring our food waste there for for processing.
Great. Okay, well, it's good to know there's, at least the door is open. How many composters and digesters did you sell this year?
I'd have to look that number up. It's been, it's more than last year. I know that for sure. It's been really successful. We've had to order more bins because we'd sold out. There's just been a lot more action this year around those two two devices that we sell. And I think the videos and the promotion we've done, especially with the tax bill insert issue, really helped get the word out those were available.
Yeah, yeah, they the I thought the videos that the student did were were terrific. Useful content. Just to echo what I said earlier about the importance of measurements, you know, if you could get any measurements in this report. We were talking about organics, where we get a better understanding of of some of the numbers that show us how we're doing. That that would be helpful.
Yeah, definitely. The the food waste composition study will give us some really good metrics into the amount of food that's appearing in the garbage and what type of food waste it is, whether it be an open food packaging, for example, leftover food, food that's unavoidable, like a carrot top. So there's we'll have a lot of good information coming out of that and give us collective information about the potential weights of food waste organics that Dyser produces.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, John. Okay, thank you. Thank you, John. Um, so can I have a mover, second or then to receive the report? Councillor Clark and seconded by councillor Wood Roberts. Your result that the committee, the whole received the food waste organics update for, uh, report for information. All in favor? Great. And thank you for uh, reaching out to Peterborough as councillor Smith stated. We just wanted to make sure that they knew that we were interested. It may never go anywhere, but uh. It's good to know that, that that was followed up. Thank you. So lastly, in this uh. Department, we have requests for proposal of the management of household hazardous waste.
Yeah, so each year, uh, Dicer hosts household hazardous waste days or HHW days. Um, we've had an agreement since twenty thirteen with Buckham Transport Limited to collect uh, transport and process those materials. Algonquin Highlands and Minden Hills has a shared agreement with Buckham. And then um, Highlands East has an agreement with Drainall for their hazardous waste events. Uh, on October first of this year, there was a new hazardous and special products regulation that came into effect in the province, which is kind of impacting the way hazardous waste is managed. And then on top of it, uh, the Halbert Municipal uh, Service Delivery Review was really encouraging the four local municipalities to develop a coordinated approach. To these uh, extended or individual producer responsibility programs and to coordinate vendors. Um, recently at the Halliburton County Service Delivery Review Steering Committee. Uh, a resolution was passed to endorse the continued collaboration between us. Uh, and to endorse a proposal that a bid for service should be unified across the county. And that staff were just uh, directed to continue discussing a central hazardous waste depot. So in light of all of this. Um, staff are recommending a collaborative uh, request or proposals, RFP with other participating Halliburton municipalities. To be developed and released uh, for the provision of hazardous waste collection, transportation and processing. The I goal is that we would develop uh, the RFP this fall, so it's released. And then in twenty twenty two. Collectively, we would have the same number of household hazardous waste drop off days. However, um, the provision is that we want to make it that. Uh, residents could cross local municipal boundaries. So you could go to an event in Minden Hills, go to events in Algonquin Highlands, for example. And that would essentially increase the number of events residents could attend. Um, obviously, there's some financial considerations with people crossing boundaries. Um, so uh, staff would work to determine a cost sharing methodology. And once that was in place. And we report back to committee of the whole for its approval around that cost sharing mechanism. And we've had great discussions with the other lower tier municipalities about this initiative and we're definitely uh, quite active on, on getting this RFP out. Uh, in the next, next month or so.
This is really great to hear. This is um. You know, all stemming, like you said, from service delivery review. Uh, we, we know that departments were talking. Already, but this is a, if this can come forward, this would be an absolute prime example of working together and um. Yeah, great news actually. So any other comments or uh, do we just move in second? Councillor Smith, are you moving or commenting?
Uh, having to move it, I wanted to ask John a question if he had any insight as to uh. Uh, why uh, like Algonquin Highlands, which is a population much less than ours. Uh, had five uh, events uh, from a hazardous waste pop off point of view, covering twenty hours. Minden Hills had four events. And a half hour. Um, and so you have any sense of the rationale as to why they have um, you know, more serving a smaller population than we do is it?
Um, some of it is historic and in Algonquin Highlands instances, they're uh, going to uh, some of their more remote sites. And maybe only operating that drop off for three hours or so, which is how they get to have. Five or six events. It's uh, they're quite, they're shorter in duration. Um, and some of those events get. Maybe twenty to fifty people coming to them. Um, so they're not necessarily serving more people. They're just. They have more hours because they're geographically reaching kind of just uh, geographically far places.
Okay, uh, anyway, we can't know why another municipality does what they do, but like probably you said, just because it's historic. Um, so uh, councillor Smith, was that you moving then? I took it. Yes, okay. And then seconded please by. Uh, councillor Clark. Your result that the committee, the whole direct staff to develop and release a collaborative request for proposal. With other participating Halliburton municipalities for the provision of household hazardous waste collection, transportation and processing. All in favor? Great. Um, just to clarify, that was carried by the way, uh, just to clarify. So the RFP is going, will. Uh, hopefully, all the municipalities will have to pass a similar thing and then requests will go out. And when would the deadline? Like, when would we know by?
And we're hoping to issue the RFP in November, so we'd have information for. Uh, late December, early January for the, for the budgeting purposes of twenty twenty two.
Great timing. Okay, um, that concludes the public works department. So thank you, everybody. Thanks, Rob. Thanks, John. Jeff left us. Um, uh, just looking at the time, I'm going to, we, we can continue and go and do. The next section, which is parks, recreation and event, or we could call for a break. What would people like to do? Show me a hand if you want a break. Okay, two hands or three, four, everybody, lots of breaks. Okay, so we will take a fifteen minute recess. And reconvene at ten thirty. So if you could just uh, turn your cameras off, that would be great. Thank you. Okay, so we're back from recess and we're going to move into parks, recreation and events and we'll bring in Andrea Mueller. He's got the first report. Just bringing in Andrea. Hi Andrea.
Morning, how are you?
Good. Okay, great. So the first is just a, a status report, so um. Is anything you want to highlight or speak to or?
Um, no, it's, this is a status report for the parks and rec department, so arena and parks. I don't know if there's anything that.
Yeah.
Needed um, clarification or, or anything. There are still some outstanding projects, but quite a few of the things on the list were completed. Um, in the spring or summer, fall of this year.
Uh, myself and councillor Smith and um, councillor Wood Roberts had the opportunity to go upstairs at the arena and see the. Kitchen renovation and I was incredibly impressed with the work that they did there. So um. That, that was much appreciated.
They were, they've been working hard.
Hmm. Okay, so uh, if there's no questions and it's just uh, councillor Smith then?
Thanks. Uh, just a, a couple of things uh, um, to the uh, to the visit upstairs to the kitchen. It also uh. Opened our eyes, if you like, to the potential uh, of using that uh, space for pickleball. And uh, I think you're going to get quotes on uh, on uh, light shelters, shields to protect the light bulb. If they do that. Um, did you have an update with regard to pickleball at Headlake uh, tennis courts is happening there?
We, we were received what colors the tennis club would like. We don't have the paint. We, they have lines, haven't been painted yet. The staff have been. I know, and we said the pickleball players could do that. It's just, we have to get the paint to, to give that to them to do. Um, so I will try ordering today or tomorrow. We, it's been rather busy. And as far as crack ceiling, I know that doesn't do with pickleball. I have not received any information back from the company that I was trying to reach out to, to get the materials. I haven't heard back from them, so I need to give them a phone call again and see. If we can get them, so.
Thank you. Um, I was also curious about the uh, signs for the uh, West Gopher Recreation Center.
They're reordered. There was some, there were signs made, but then there was one sign which the arrow was. It didn't fit with what was going on. I don't know if Ryan ended up putting those ones there or not as an interim fix. Um, but they've been reordered to be correct, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so mover and second or for this uh, status report please. Uh, councillor Clark and councillor Donaldson. Your result that the committee, the whole receives the parks and recreation status report as information. All in favor? Okay, uh, carried. Uh, I have a procedure for found items at the welcome center. I have to say, I think I heard on a local radio station that there was a stroller. That's a very large and not inexpensive item. So I suppose maybe that was one of the things that prompted us is what do we do with. A large item like that. So do you want us to get to this?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And that's exactly what prompted this because we have had some items like sunglasses and things get turned in over the course of the, the um. Being open, we had some, found somebody's driver's license, which we were able to reunite with the owner, but uh. The stroller, that was, it's like, okay, we need to have a, a procedure here because we don't want to hold on to a stroller forever. They are valuable. This is a, it's a nice stroller, so um, hence the reason for this being brought forward. Um, so our thought is, uh, and I looked at other procedures for different places on what they do. Um, so I looked at like the town of. Oakville, I, I couldn't find many to begin with, but I found some for the town of Oakville, the London Transit Commission, a couple of. Schools or universities. So I tried to make something that would work or that I thought would work for us at the welcome center. Um, so basically, if an item. Is perishable, we're going to get rid of it right away because we don't want to hold on to that. Uh, if it's medication, we will try to contact the owner of the medication. And if unable, it will, staff will take it to a pharmacy for it to be disposed of. Um, if it's under a hundred dollars in value, we'll hold on to it for thirty days and then donate it or destroy it, depending on the nature of the item. Like if it's. In, in quality to be able to pass it on to, to um, somewhere, then we will. Um, valuables, again, it's still, we're holding on to them for thirty days. As you know, the space there is limited. Uh, we don't want to hold on to anything of too much value for any length of time. Uh, we're trying to keep those items out of the welcome center. Um, so if it's deemed that it is worth more than a hundred dollars, then we'll hold on to it. After the thirty days, if we haven't received, if any, no one has contacted us for it or it hasn't been returned to the owner. Then we will uh, donate it or destroy it depending on the nature of the item. And if it's a bicycle, we'll call the OPP for them to come and get it because. Um, I know that they deal with uh, lost and found bikes. Um, money, gift cards, uh, anything that has like a cash value. Uh, will be put in an envelope with the person who turned it in, their name. After thirty days, if no one's claimed it, it will go back to the person that turned it in. Um, and, and everything. And then we'll keep track. So if there's something. That is of value, whether it's money, bike, purse, whatever, staff will keep track of that. So then they know. When it was returned or if it was donated, depending on that time window. And same thing with government issued ID, like. Health card, driver's license, that sort of thing. And if we ever have a passport turned in, we'll send it straight back to Passport Canada. So uh. Hopefully that's clear and makes sense. Um, and hopefully we don't get too many of those items coming to the welcome center, but. We are the park and people do turn things in, so we, we just want to make sure we have a procedure in place.
Well, that's a, that's a great idea. And I read it and thought it was, it made sense. And just as a curi- curiosity note, was the stroller ever uh? Picked up?
No, and I'm surprised because it's a really nice stroller.
You know, it's, it obviously been, it was on our local radio station. So if it was someone that was from out of town, uh. That, that's, I don't know. At least they didn't forget the kid. Sorry.
Yeah, that's the main thing. There was no, no child and no, nothing to even suggest that child had been in the stroller, so. Um, but they have, there was turned in a few weeks ago, so they have another week, I think, or two to hold on to it. And then if not, we'll donate it, I think, to the pregnancy center, actually. So.
That's excellent. Okay, well, thank you for this. And I just, just being tongue in cheek, trying to find some light in the day. Uh, so I will look for mover or a second or to um. Uh, approve the uh, this policy. Uh, councillor Wood Roberts and councillor McKechnie. Your result that the committee, the whole recommend that council approve the procedure for found items at Halliburton, at the Halliburton Welcome Center. All in favor? Okay, carried. Thank you. And a tree removal. Sad, but I think quite necessary.
Yeah, so this one here, as, as you can see from the report, the tree has been causing some issues for staff with maintaining the ice at the. Outdoor rink on Maple Avenue. Um, the tree being a spruce tree is quite acidic and the roots under the ground. And then what falls from the tree. Uh, really degrades the quality of the ice and staff say, you know, they can't get quality ice. At the far end of the rink, but around where the tree is, it becomes yellow and really um. I don't know, granular is not quite the right word, but it becomes very rough and uh. And pine cones get stuck in the ice. So, so they spend a lot of time or a lot of additional time trying to clean the ice to make it smooth in that area. And. Staff feel that if it, the tree is removed, it will make. The maintenance of the ice a lot easier and it will take less staff time to maintain the ice at that rink. So. Um, they're recommending that, that we are recommending that the tree be removed. Um, it doesn't. As far as shade goes, I don't ever really see people sitting under the tree for shade. The picnic table's on the other side of the tree as well as the bench, so. I don't know if that would affect things in the summer so much, but uh, definitely it would make it easier in the winter for, for ice. For uh, keeping quality ice.
Yeah, I, um, so, and actually because the tree is on the north side, the shade, it comes from, if, if, if someone did need shade in that. Whether they were playing ball hockey or, or doing anything out of that area, the shade comes from the trees down the uh. Down the other side, if you will, the riverside. So um. Is it possible, is this tree removal, not stump removal as well, just the tree itself? And uh, if we tender that out, is it possible there would likely be some very salvageable wood? It's a very nice um. Tree, and I don't know if that could be donated or used for anything else. I don't think spruce is your typical firewood, but.
I can ask staff. It is a soft wood, so I'm not sure if it's a typical firewood or not, but we can ask. Um, the tree removal, I don't think they need to remove the stump from my discussions with them. It's just a straight removal and it, it. It's a, it's a tall, straight standing tree, so they seem, they think that it will be fairly easy. To have it to direct which way it's going to go and to take it down. It's pretty straightforward from the sounds of things.
Maybe the top could be used for the local town Christmas tree this year.
There you go.
No, you just take, they, they did that for Mother Trees another year. Someone cut down a tree on private property. Um, and they topped it and it made a beautiful Christmas tree in the downtown. So anyway, just if we could think of something, uh. So this is generally, I was sort of surprised that this came to council, but appreciated it also. It is really a, a. More of a maintenance issue than a council decision, but, but it, you know, it, it will be noticed because it is a lovely looking tree. So uh, I will ask for mover and a second or for that then. At councillor McKechnie and deputy mayor Kennedy. Your result that the committee, the whole recommends that council provide approval for park staff to remove. The spruce tree at Rotary Outdoor Rink on Maple Avenue. All in favor? Okay, that's carried. Andrea, as I read that resolution, are, are staff going to do that? Or are we tendering this out?
Uh, staff thought that they can do it, but if I can double check with them and, or if you prefer, we have it tendered out, we can go either route.
Uh, no, if staff, if staff have the capability and are able to do it and then just uh. If you internally can find out if the, the top can be saved or uh, maybe councillor Wood Roberts, you can check if the BIA have a Christmas tree already lined up. And that, just those details. No staff can do it. That's fabulous.
Okay.
Um, okay, and playground equipment at Headlake Park is.
This one's not such a good report. I know um, it's, it needed to come forward. Uh. So there's, we have the equipment at Headlake Park. As you know, there's the um, the wooden structure that houses some uh, slides. Uh, a little couple of climbing apparatuses. That structure, um, there, there's a platform years ago that uh. We tried to replace. The company said, no, you can't replace it or try and look and see. But since then, they've said that there's, you can no longer get replacement parts and that they don't recommend we keep that structure in place. Um, it's predominantly, the main features of it are made out of wood. Uh, over time, the wood is deteriorating. Uh, they recommend it's taken away just to meet the current um, CSA standards. It's no longer deemed safe. Um, so staff are planning to remove that equipment. That being said though, there's going to be a big hole in the park. We'll have swings. And we'll have a tire swing. So there's a, there's three, three swing structures. And then a tire swing. So some of those are toddler swings. There is a. three, three swing structures and then a tire swing. So some of those are toddler swings. There is a um, a swing for people with uh you know, certain disabilities. There's the tire swing and there's some uh other swings. But um, there's going to be a big gap. Already last week, they had to remove the teeter totter. It was rotten, couldn't be salvaged, so that was taken out. Uh, but this, this next piece is, is going to leave a big gap or a big hole. So we're looking at some possible uh replacement suggestions that are going to come forward in the twenty twenty-two budget. Whether it be, whether they become part of the budget process, uh and we, we pay for that out of um money that's on hand, or we uh look for grant applications. We're, we're just going to bring forward some different possibilities. Uh, but we wanted to make sure that you were aware of that and why this is happening. Um so we're looking right now just to see what's available. In addition, the sand base, sand bases are no longer acceptable for playgrounds. So like, for instance, in um Eagle Lake, the, the, all the sand was removed in the playground area and wood chips were put in two years ago now. Uh, staff are going to do that at Head Lake Park as well. We have enough wood chips in storage, or they figure we have enough wood chips of the, of the right kind. Sorry, there, there can't just be any wood chips. They have to be uh certified wood chips for playgrounds. So we have, we should have enough of those. And they're going to start with removing the sand and putting the wood chips down to make sure that we're meeting the current playground safety standards. Um, so those are a few things that are happening. Uh, I know it's never great to hear that we need new playground equipment because that's never cheap. But uh, we're going to explore different options and um bring something forward for future consideration.
Okay, uh, thank you for that heads up and for that playground equipment. I can attest that it is used. I have taken my grandson there. He loves it and it was several weeks ago, I mean, twenty kids plus playing on it. So it's a very, very, very well-used play, piece of playground uh area. So we were, we have been fortunate at Dicer that we had somebody who has their certification to be able to install playground equipment. So labor is a big chunk of it. If we're just purchasing equipment and we're able to do it ourselves, um, I'm, I don't know if that's going to be a possibility for next year. Uh, did we not do the equipment at West Guilford in that manner?
We, we did do the equipment in that manner, and there is somebody uh who we can bring on, um, who used to work for our Parks Department, who's still certified, who I think is willing to come back and work um casually for us to help with the playgrounds and the inspections. Um, he was actually helping us right now with inspections of the playgrounds. Um, because he is certified, but we're also looking to send, and you'll see it coming forward in budget. Um, one of our park staff for their playground safety, uh, so that they can do this inspections on their own and also the installation. So the, even the piece that um for the installation is taking place for the new equipment over on Rotary Beach that's gone through this process with somebody who is, who is certified, so.
Okay, I can see Tamara wants to speak to that, too.
No, I just, they like to build on that. Um, our staff are very skilled at it, but the one thing we need to keep in mind is that equipment we choose is fairly easy to install, too, like the one that Andrea just mentioned in Rotary Park has one point of contact with the ground, which means it's only got to build one big footing. And they're very big because they're holding a great big piece of equipment. The one in West Guilford, in contrast, I think five huge footings probably had more contract or concrete in it than a typical basement. So it was a lot of work and time consuming. So it's just those kind of things that the more you can simplify with that, it helps also with our terrain where we don't have the most stable ground to work with either, just have a single point of contact.
Yeah, it's good, good points. I, I, I was just referring to the fact, even just when I mentioned earlier about the kitchen renovation at the arena, uh, all our money went to materials and not labor because it was done internally. So yes, it went to labor indirectly, but we were keeping our arena staff busy at a time when we weren't open also. So we're very fortunate to have such skilled people at Dicer. And if we tendered out uh park equipment and included installation, I would imagine two-thirds of the cost of a tender or quote would be the labor and about a third or fifty-fifty. So if we're at all able to do any of the work ourselves, it's uh, it's, would be great. So Counselor Clark.
Um, sure, you, Madam Mayor, these are often the type of initiatives or projects that service clubs like to support. Um, you know, but you know, in terms of what they're doing for communities, so there may be those options too to to um kind of float out to some of our different service groups in the community. See if any of them want to get their name on something for for the, for the community. Thank you.
Okay, well, we'll wait to see what Andrea comes up with as we go into discussion, but I think for today's purposes, it was if you see the teeter totter gone, and if you see certain things gone and get a heads up, is that basically what for the purpose of today's report is. So, so that's good to know. Uh, so I do need to move her in a second or to receive this then. Uh, Council Donaldson and Council Wood Roberts. It resolved that the committee, the whole receives the playground equipment at Head Lake Park report for information. All in favor? Okay, and that's carried. Okay, thank you, Andrea.
Have a good day and welcome back.
Okay, so next we have a report from uh Kate Butler at the museum, and she's been brought in. Good morning, Kate.
Good morning. How's everyone doing?
Great.
Yep, so um, we've had a busy autumn so far at the, the museum. Lots of visitors around, people extending that summer season, which is is great to see. And we're, we're making plans for, for winter programming and that, that whole um you know, what, what our new, our new temporary normal is at, at the moment, as things open up, that, that little bit more. And other things we're working on at the moment, we are doing some work on uh, on Reed House, uh, doing some uh, some work to help increase the ventilation around Reed House. So that's a uh, a work in progress, and we're going to see how much we can get done there before winter weather sets in. Um, and the whatever, whatever else may need to be done next year. So uh, take it one step at a time.
Okay, um, yeah, I saw the, the bin there at the Reed House, and also it says that with some trees are going to be pinned by an arborist. Uh has that happened yet or?
Yes.
Okay, great, couldn't tell that. Any questions for Kate on the museum report? Uh, Counselor Clark, go ahead.
Um, yeah, to you, Madam Mayor. Um, yeah, Kate, great, great stuff. Um, there's been a lot of people coming in the community to, to attend the Sculpt, Sculpture Forest. And we've got the, the sawmill and all the, you know, some of those other parts over towards that area. Any opportunity for kind of cross promotion or whatever, just to?
We do, uh, and we certainly do that, um, you know, whenever we possibly can. And certainly when the Sculpture Forest is busy, we also uh, we also benefit, um, particularly the way that sort of museum is stretched out along that path and down at one end, we are uh right across from the Sculpture Forest. So we certainly do benefit um as well. And Sculpture Forest has also been wonderful. The latest brochure that uh they printed, there is, you know, special mention in there, you're while you're in Ingle Park, make sure you visit the museum as well. And so we promote them, they promote us. So it's a, it's a really lovely relationship. And I would say that of all of our uh community partners in Deep Park. It really is a, a great group that works together and uh, try and find any way that we can possibly help each other, promote each other. Uh, so no, we definitely see benefits there.
Okay, thanks. And thank you also to include the report on the donations. I believe I'd asked that at a previous meeting. So um, okay, so mover, second or to receive, please. Uh, Counselor Clark and Deputy Mayor Kennedy. It resolved that the committee, the whole acknowledges received the Halliburton Highlands Museum report. All in favor? Okay, Carrie. Thank you, Kate.
Thank you.
Okay, next we're going to bring in building and bylaw. And we've got Carl joining us, and I believe Robert's coming in as well. Um, before we get started, uh, Carl, congratulations to you and your chapter on the award. Maybe you can just uh let us know what the award was, so I don't get the wording of it wrong. And.
Sure. Yeah, it was the uh Chapter of the Year Award. Uh, it was a pleasant surprise to, to get it. Uh, but thinking back, we did do a lot in uh January or February for the, uh, before COVID hit. Uh, that's when we met with, um, we held the four, uh, the four forums, uh, one with the builders, one with the designers, septic installers, and then with the realtors. And we did hold the three uh local training um uh courses locally here. So uh, looking back at it, I think we did do a lot and uh you know, we are the smallest and newest chapter. Uh, some, some of them have, uh, some chapters have over a hundred members. We have thirteen on a good day. So yeah, it was a pleasant surprise.
And this is across Ontario.
Correct, yeah.
So congratulations to uh, to you and the uh, all the staff throughout the departments in the county. That's amazing. Um, okay, so first we'll look at the uh Building Permit Activity Report. Anything you want to highlight?
Yeah, another pleasant surprise. It was actual uh regular September, you know, with various permit numbers. So um, that was, uh, that was a relief. Uh, so permits might be slowing down a little bit and uh yeah, we're, we're, we're glad to see that.
The number of permits may be coming down to more realistic, but certainly is the dollar value, the construction value. So we do know construction costs have come up, but would you say on average, the size of the type of construction and the quality at the size of the buildings, et cetera, are what's driving up the uh dollar value?
Yeah, like, like I've said, uh, in the past, we, we we're used to seeing a couple of really large cottages uh being constructed. This year, almost every second cottage being constructed is a very large cottage. So it's a, it's an interesting note that brings up the construction value and the permit fees considerably. Uh, that's a, that's a difference that we've seen this year.
Which one day brings the impact assessment up and takes a few years for all of that to trickle down, but technically, that's, you know, good news for Dicer, too. Any questions to Carl on this report? Uh, Counselor Smith, go right ahead.
Thanks. Uh, Carl, just a, a question of clarification, if you like. Uh, um, in your report here, you've broken out the septic permits uh from the uh, you know, the building permits, if you like. Uh, and um when, when some, one of these, you mentioned one of these new cottages, somebody's building a, a big cottage. Um, whether it's a demolished to an old one or whether it's just a net new, do they get, in your report here, do you count them both for a building permit and a septic permit, or does the building permit uh that they secure include the septic uh requirements?
No, the septic permit's a, a permit on its own, so it's counted in the overall numbers. Same with the construction value of that septic system. It's counted separate from the, from the dwelling construction.
Okay. Well, that, um, you know, I was looking at, kind of at the uh numbers of people who may be replacing septic systems because of the uh inspection process. Um, but, um, you know, uh uh, man, obviously, given the building activity, most of the septic systems are related to a new building as opposed to a need to replace a faulty system.
Yeah, several of them would be. A lot of them do try to uh, uh, do use the existing septic system if it signs accordingly. Uh, so that's, we haven't broken out as to which ones are in replacement septics. I, due to the reinspection program or just new, new systems because of new builds.
Well, the WSP report, will it tell us how many uh inspections resulted in the need for the installation of new system?
So again, they wouldn't very, they wouldn't identify that a new system is required. Uh, it's up to the owner as to which way they choose to go. Uh, sometimes like, so if a tank is uh, is uh uh, is pooched, then they need a new tank. So that would be included as a new septic system. Uh, and that could be something that's easily reported. Uh, whether the bed needs to be upgraded because they've added additional bedrooms, that's up to the owner to verify uh, or to, to, to complete that process. And WSP is not aware of that continuation once it gets in our hands. Once it becomes a failed system.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, so I'll look for a mover in a second or to uh receive the building permit report. Uh, Council McCackney and Secretary of Council Donaldson. It resolved that the committee, the whole received the September twenty twenty-one Building Permit Activity Report as information. All in favor? Okay, Carrie's? And uh, a bylaw report. Robert.
Morning, everyone. Um, changed up the bylaw report a little bit uh due to some uh requests. Um, pretty straightforward. Uh, if there's any questions or anything from council, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, Counselor Clark.
Hi, Rob. Um, most of them are to deal with the zoning complaints. What? Can you give me an example of what they're talking about with, say, you know, the zoning complaints?
So I'd say about seventy-five percent of them are trailers used on either vacant lands without building permits or using them on, on one, on their properties that do have uh established primary uses on them. Are, are, are about seventy-five percent of those complaints for zoning. Yeah, great, thank you.
Counselor Smith.
Thank you. Uh, it's, thanks for uh um, you know, updating the report, Rob, and uh providing this additional information. It is uh, um, you know, uh, insightful. Um, you know, and, and use zoning as an example, the, the fact that twenty out of the thirty-three complaints you've received, so uh um, you know, we are talking sixty percent of them are, are still open. Um, is, is, what's the difficulty in terms of resolving these zoning complaints that uh a high proportion of them is still, are still open?
A lot of them are cottagers, getting all of the cottagers and getting them up here to make, bring their, their, their properties back into compliance. Is one of the big things I'm finding online and things. A lot of cottagers.
Okay, so uh um, I guess help me understand why, like, you know, if you make a call, they're the cottagers would have been around presumably July and August. Uh, so are they resisting the request or like, help me understand why this is?
A lot of them are asking for more time because of either job restraints down from where they're from or or the travel complaints. A lot of it, too, is COVID and their travel restrictions. Um, but we all know a lot of them um don't really follow the orders either way. But uh, and I'm there to work with them, too. Um they all, there, a lot of them are asking me for, for longer, for longer timelines and, and uh, and whatnot because of different things of getting up there. They don't plan on coming up there and, and, and things like that. And so a lot of them is just not traveling, not coming up here to travel and things like that, so.
So, and I, I.
It leaves one wondering if we need to be more uh um if we need tougher standards or something like, that it makes you feel like we're just being led along here as opposed to people actually obeying our laws.
Or Counselor Smith, we could see that we have the staff who are doing their job in a compassionate way. And then when you feel that that is exhausted, then Robert knows what the next steps are. In fact, we're going to be looking at a couple of situations. So, you know, in I, I, I think that we have to leave that with staff, and if he can't uh go through the tools and the things that he has, that he has at his disposal, then enforcement uh to the full letter of what it is should be the final result. Uh, not necessarily the first. And we've always had that attitude at Dicer, in all the building and bylaw department and in other things is that, you know, work with the, work with the complaint, work with that, try to educate uh a little leniency. We're not turning a blind eye to things, but I think that if uh, you know, Robert does have support to, to follow whatever consequences are necessary in due course. Any other comments to Robert? Do, uh, medical arm, the medical arm, arm at the medical center, is that still up?
Hope they should be back down now.
Okay. Okay.
We had, uh, we had a little bit of issues uh last week with it. Uh, it's just jamming up, the paper be jamming up. So I contacted Parking Box and and had them uh just walk me through some steps that we can do to take. And I was just basically cleaning up the, the, the machine a little bit and.
Okay, great. Um, and any comments on the report? Is there anything, uh, it's in a different little bit of a format? Uh, so is there anything that counselors want to see differently, or they like this new format? We'll continue along. Okay. Okay, great. Uh, mover in a second to them, please. Uh, Counselor Wood Roberts, and I'm sorry, I didn't look up C second by Counselor Clark. It resolved that the committee, the whole acknowledges received the September bylaw update report. All in favor? Okay, and that's. Okay, and that's carried. Right, thank you. Okay, so our next section is planning and land information. And we just have a couple of things here. Wait till our staff. Oh, there's Jeff already in. And I think it's just Jeff today. Yep. So Jeff, take it away. First.
Thank you. Good morning. The first item is a request to purchase an original road allowance. Clearview Payment Solutions has submitted an application to purchase purchase the original road allowance adjacent to their property on Lipsy Lake. They wish to build a cottage on the lot in the near future and would like to acquire more land. The applicants note that the purchase will not not deny public access to Lipsy Lake because of a road allowance that exists on the north side of the lake. Staff reviewed the policy based on this request. Section three point two point seven of the official plan provides the direction for council for closing and conveying of road allowances. And I did outline these provisions in my staff report. Based on these provisions and that the road allowance has the potential to be used for recreational trail purposes in the future, staff recommend that the road allowance be protected. During the property review process, it was also determined that there's existing development on the property and that that development does not comply with the zoning bylaw. Given that the development is not located on the the road allowance, historically, council has not made direct decisions to to enforce that that struck those structures. Therefore, staff recommend that the matter be forwarded to the bylaw enforcement department for review. As an update, staff received an email this morning from the applicants. Before I take anything to council, I like to send an email to before I bring anything to council, like to send emails to the applicants just to advise them what staff's position is and what's going forward so that they're not blindsided. In response, they note that they were not aware of the zoning issues when they constructed the buildings and they apologize. They note that the building is currently used to store kayaks, stand up paddle boards, et cetera, for when they when they visit their property. They are requesting the options available to them to keep those structures. Pertaining to the road allowance, they note that Misty Knoll Road is a private road that is blocked by a large gate, and therefore the road allowance is not accessible by road. Further, that the Lake Association would be highly opposed to people using that road for access to that road allowance or access to the lake. They reiterate that there is public access on the north side of the lake and question why this one is needed. And that they would be happy to attend a future council meeting if council would like more information. As per the report and policy, staff maintain that recommendation that the subject road allowance be protected for future potential recreational purposes. Not just for access to Lipsy Lake, but also access from Lipsy Lake to the lands to the south. Staff will continue to work with the applicants with their options to bring those structures into compliance and request direction to proceed. Does council have any questions for me?
Well, I think likely we will. I should have some conversation here, but I think the issue of the the zoning matter will send to our building bylaw department. Is that okay to? I don't think we need to discuss that. We're discussing the request of the purchase of the original road allowance for this purpose. Is that fair, Mallory, to say that's been directed? Yeah, okay, so we'll deal with that. The applicant now is aware, though. So selling, excuse me, selling of an original road allowance. Any questions, comments to Jeff? Counselor Clark?
I agree with Jeff. We we have to protect the longer term, long term interests of of lake access. But once it's sold, you don't bring it back. So it's you know, we don't. We don't know what thing is going to look like in twenty or thirty years' time with with changes. So it'd be inappropriate for us to sell off the that lake access. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Was there another hand that I saw? It's not Deputy Mayor Kennedy. Had you had your hand up?
I didn't, but I'd like to speak to it. I'm also with Counselor Clark. I don't have a crystal ball of what the future holds, and I'm always reluctant to sell off any open road allowances. So I would vote no to this as well. Thank you.
Okay, fair enough. Counselor Smith.
Yep, thank you. I agree. Selling off the road allowance here would be an inappropriate thing to do. This owner has done nothing to demonstrate to the rules anyway. And although you said we're going to talk about it, I am curious in a situation like this. You know, presumably, given there was no building permit, there's been no tax records to reflect a cottage on this property either. Is that correct?
Yes, correct. It's assessed as a vacant lot.
So you know, when we're when working through this with the owner, hopefully there'll be a retroactive, you know, tax adjustment. I mean, I
Well, we Counselor Smith, I'm going to cut you off there because that's not what we're talking about. And I stated that at the beginning. Well, that's that will be that whole issue of noncompliance on what's happening on the property. Let's let the building and bylaw department, they are now aware of it. So we're not here to discuss that. We're here to discuss, are we willing to entertain? There's been a request to purchase the original road allowance. So that's all we need to talk about today. And we will be, we're not forgetting the other issue, but that's not on the table today.
It's in the report. The information is in the report. So they say it's not on the table is, you know, rather restrictive interpretation.
Because we're talking to our Director of Planning, not our Building and Bylaw Department. And he even said we will pass that in the the beginning of my opening comments for this item to be discussed. I said, let's leave that with Building and Bylaw Department. They're not here to discuss this right now.
Well, Jeff responded to my question, and I thank him for that. He did inform myself and council as a whole that this property owner has not been paying taxes on a cottage that they built. They've been taxed as a vacant lot. That's fraudulent, frankly. Somebody would have a cottage and still have their property reported as a vacant lot because they didn't go through a permitting process.
And your comments to the purchase of the original road allowance?
I began my comment by saying that I supported staff recommendation that we not sell. Absolutely.
Okay, so we've heard from several counselors. So the resolution that was included. Just a minute. It does in the resolution that says to deny the request. So Counselor Donaldson, you want to chime in?
Yeah, I just have a quick question for Jeff. If you have been out to the property, the road allowance, because I I've not been there. I I don't know how it sits, but is it like and what it looks like? Like, is it a rock? Is it nice property like a flat surface? Like, what is the road allowance actually?
Thank you. I personally not attended the site. The building department goes out and gets the pictures, so I'm not aware of the topography. Certainly, it could be that there are items that need to be addressed to make it usable for a trail such as a snowmobile association, but we always plan a hundred years in the future. So I always think it's a good idea to keep those options open because you never know.
Counselor Donaldson on the one sketch, and it's only this this get the survey sketch, you know, that shows the where the bungee is, where the dock is, et cetera. It does have the contour line. So if you're adept at reading those, it's it's, you know, not easy. But I think the point is that we don't, I don't see support for the this request. And that is what the resolution included in our package states, and we'll let the building and bylaw department deal with the other. This is, I mean, they have a substantial waterfront lot area in size. And those lots were specifically developed to be large lakefront lots. So there's lots of room to build there. So do we have a mover in a second here for this resolution? Counselor Smith and Counselor Deputy Mayor Kennedy? You resolved that the committee, the whole recommends that council, based on the direction of section three point two point seven of the official plan, deny the request by Clearview Payment Solutions Incorporated to purchase a portion of the original allowance for road between lots five and six concession eleven in the geographic township of Guilford. And further recommends that council direct the bylaw department to contact the property owner to address the zoning bylaw compliance issues on the subject lands. All in favor? Okay, that's carried. And some fees, draft fees.
Yes, thank you. This item is a draft fee by law. At the meeting in August, council approved an update to policy number thirty two, which is a policy that governs the use of road allowances. The change was to include a public notification requirement for certain license of occupation applications. Council further directed staff that to update the planning fee by law to incorporate a one hundred fifty dollar fee to cover that public notification process. So that's basically what we've done here. During the review, I discussed it with the clerk, and we've also consolidated the planning fees into the municipality's general fee and charges by law instead of having separate fee bylaws. We thought this would be easier, both internally and externally. The notice and the notice requirements have been completed. And the actual bylaw is proposed to proceed to council on October twenty sixth. Are there any questions with the update?
Questions? Counselor Smith?
Thank you. Thanks, Jeff. Just the will you accept payment by credit card for this?
I actually defer that to Barbara. I don't know.
I think again, this is part of the broader discussion that we've referred to earlier. We need to bring back later.
Okay, so there's going to be a reported a future date on things that we accept credit card for, and we do not in other cases. As I said, I was triggered by the statement that for a marriage license, it must be cash certified, check or a money order.
We're working through different systems right now as we try to deliver services differently online and so forth. And as you can expect, we can't get through every item at one time. So we're working through the things that make the most sense. And there'll be more projects coming forward that have to look at credit cards. And it's just, it's a huge discussion. At some point, yes, but it may not be as a whole organization. It's going to be each piece because each piece is handled differently. And that's different impacts. Kennedy.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Kennedy, go ahead.
Yeah, and thanks, Jeff. Good idea to move it under the consolidated fee by law. There has been discussion at the county level about consolidating or reviewing at the lower tiers each of the fees and trying to come to a common value. So will this just be an interim step to for the balance until whatever happens with that initiative?
Yes, thank you. That's correct. We have been through the service delivery review. We have been discussing planning fees with all other lower tier municipalities. We had that discussion whether we would be bringing forward any updated fee bylaws, and we've chose not to until that discussion's completed. So at this time, it just is directed just to get this fee implemented so that if we receive a request in the near future for a license of occupation, that we have this in place and that we don't have to do that circulation at the municipality's cost.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. Okay, so I'll look, excuse me, remover in a second here. Counselor Wood Robertson, Deputy Mayor Kennedy. You resolved that the committee, the whole accepts the amendments to the fees and charges by law as written and further recommends the bylaw be brought to the October twenty six, twenty twenty one council meeting for approval. All in favor? Okay, carried. Well, that was everything in planning. That was short, Jeff. For change. Okay, and we'll move into the finance department next. And Barbara's already on screen. Our check summary is there. Clearly, it's the quarterly payments of some large payments there to have the of that, if you want to speak to that.
Ah, yes. Good morning. So we have here disbursements for September twenty twenty one. And obviously, this is the last month of the third quarter. Total disbursements were just over four point seven million dollars. Of that, three point four million was for the Q three levy transfer payments to the county and the Boards of Education. And it was also a three period payroll during September. So other than that, yeah, it's pretty much status quo.
Okay, thank you. L mover in a second or to receive, please. Counselor Wood Robertson, Counselor Clark. You resolved that the committee, the whole acknowledges receipt of the September twenty twenty one check summary. All in favor? Carrie? And our monthly metered sewage reading?
Yes, so that continues to trend a little bit lower over the previous year, roughly on a a rolling twelve month period. It's down about four percent. So, yeah, we'll continue to monitor that.
Okay, motion to receive. Counselor McKechnie and seconded by, sorry, I wasn't looking. Counselor Clark. You resolved that the committee, the whole acknowledges received the monthly metered sewage readings report for the period ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty one. All in favor? Okay, carried. And lastly, some tax adjustments?
Yep, so we have two write offs here. And the total write off is eight hundred and fifty eight dollars for the municipal portion.
So fairly standard. I'll just look for a mover in a second here. Counselor Smith and Deputy Mayor Kennedy. You resolved that the committee, the whole recommends that council authorize tax adjustments for applications made under section three fifty seven of the Municipal Act two thousand and one as amended as follows, and the totals are there. All in favor? Okay, that's carried. And I Barbara, I did send you an email over the weekend, so I hope you didn't read it till today. But anyway, just I asked Barbara to forward a bit of a budget plan for so that we have those dates in our calendars well in advance and make sure that DICEART's ready to go whenever staff are. So I know you're working behind the scenes already. Administration, we've just got a couple of things, a draft update to the cemetery fee by law. Mallory, are you speaking to that?
Yeah, so I'm pretty simple here. The there's going to be some amendments to the Funeral, Burial and Cremation Services Act. So that's going to increase the minimum care and maintenance fund. So that's prescribed through this act to us, and that will change some of our fees. So we just did a fee by law, but we're going to have to have one in effect now for January first. So the thought is that we'll bring we'll bring the bylaw for approval to December so that it comes into effect in the new year. So those are just showing some of the changes that are coming into effect. And then that will allow us to do our public notice in time as well.
Okay. Good thinking. Any questions on that? Okay, if not, I'll look for a mover in a second or please. Counselor Clark and seconded by Deputy Mayor Kennedy. You resolved that the committee, the whole acknowledges receipt of this report detailing the proposed amendments to the cemetery fee by law to reflect upcoming changes to the Funeral, Burial and Cremation Services Act effective January first, twenty twenty two. And further, that the committee recommends that the bylaw be brought to the December council meeting for adoption. All in favor? That's Carrie. And lastly, in our open session is the donation of land. And Mallory, I'll let you speak to that.
Sure, this is just an update. So in November of twenty nineteen, right before the pandemic hit, DICEART accepted this offer of land donation from from the Blairs, as we know, for a future recreation complex. It was delayed due to the pandemic and the files moving forward. So the legal representation for the Blairs is suggesting a few conditions of the donation. One, and then there's been some conversation back and forth, which maybe Mayor Roberts, you would like to speak to as well, but I'll continue on. One of the conditions would be that the lands we use for either recreational or cultural uses. So that's adding cultural as as a caveat. And then the other, the other one is that if the facility is not built within twenty years, the land would be reconveyed to the Blairs at the municipality. uh, the land would be reconveyed to the Blairs at the municipality's expense, so those are two um two little notations to add to the agreement and if committee is is receptive to this, then we'll continue forward and and bring forward a bylaw uh, to a future meeting.
Thank you, Mallory. So I'll speak to the uh, purpose of putting in cultural uses and it's come up, uh, you know, in several conversations that uh, it could be a good use of land for for some other things. Uh, it is fifteen acres. Now, not all of the fifteen acres are usable. There is some wetland there, however, uh, some U P area, but anyway, we we, there is, it's still a very large piece of parcel nonetheless. And so we, that that came at our request and was well received by the the by the giver. Um, and also the, we felt that, you know, covenant was a covenant, but they really want us to uh, to uh, put that twenty-year um, mark in there. And so that'll hold future councils to get cracking and uh, work towards some kind of a facility out there. So I think this is a great agreement. We're finally able to move forward in the goal of both the Marnie Blair and her family and municipalities to have this fully closed and transferred and titled by the end of the year. So if there's any questions, Counselor Smith, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, and uh, you know, it's a tremendous uh, generous gift on the part of the Blairs and uh, thank you for that. Uh, just uh, one uh, 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 question in, you know, previously, as is noted here, our a resolution referred to uh, the purpose of developing a recreation center. Uh, now in point two, it says that in the event that a facility is not built within twenty years, uh, uh, has there been any discussion about what do you mean by facility? So for example, um, you know, does it have to be a building? Could we have a baseball diamond and a soccer field out there and and uh, you know, a pickleball court, for example? Use a current topic. Does that qualify as a facility or does it have to be a bricks and mortar building?
No, I interpret it, uh, and Mallory or Tamara, if you want to chime in, is that it, that it could be what you just proposed, that it doesn't necessarily mean a bricks and mortar structure right away that and I think that's why there, at one point, hmm, the word center um was there and that's why we've put facility. Because
So you you've talked with them about that and confirmed that
Yeah.
Um, it doesn't need to be a building because it may never be a building, right? You know, uh, the building could always be in town, uh, but the uh, outdoor activities, the kinds of things I mean. As long as we can do that, as long as that option is open to us, I think this is terrific. Thank you.
Mallory, did you want to comment on that or?
Um, I wasn't, I wasn't there for the last discussion, as you know, uh, with with our our legal counsel, but um, I I do think the the word, the wording is so that we can kind of open it up and make sure that we so for example, if we wanted to build courts out there, that it would, no one raise an eyebrow to us building things that would be all encompassed into a facility rather than one building. So yes, I think the intention is to is to kind of open up the wording a little bit.
And I, and I think once this, there's been talking and Counselor Clark, I'll turn to you and see if you want to comment. I have a tickle, uh, because we had wanted to, you know, I know you've referenced Counselor Clark, uh, you know, getting some kind of committee together and uh, you know, sort of brainstorming and having that sort of master plan of what what it could be. I've been reluctant to do that in the event that, until the property was transferred into our name. But I think on a go-forward like, you know, starting sometime in the winter and convening some kind of a group that can see and really look at the land and where the buildable sites are and and what what could be there. And, you know, start to work towards what we could, what we could envision that property to be. So I think that would be something to to look towards for next year. Mallory?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, uh, oh, sorry, sorry.
What, I will hear from Counselor Clark, but you had
Yeah, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Um, in in the agreement, as it will be written, um, it it says that the lands should be used for the purposes of recreation or cultural uses and then in brackets, it says facility, which is 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 kind of a looser wording on purpose in case you wanted to put some recreational, you know, courts or or something such as that out there. And then it says for the health benefit and well-being of the residents and visitors of the county of Halliburton. So it's just kind of if as long as you're following it along those lines, then that's that's within the agreement terms.
Thanks, Mallory. Uh, Counselor Clark?
Um, yeah, and and this is, what I see is this is one piece of an overall strategy for, you know, our our recreation and and um, you know, cultural resources. Um, we undertook two, two and a half years ago to um, make some planning around recreation and recreation facilities a priority for this term of council and you know, you know, finance, you know, we've had some issues with regard to COVID and being able to pull people together, but I think we have to make a concerted effort next year. And 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 you're right, now that this this, uh, you know, the 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 terms and and the agreement up and kind of settled, like this piece of property can be part of our overall strategy. But um, we do have to move forward in terms of some some larger plans. And that's, that was my concerns. We don't, we don't just sit in our hands. We've got to move forward.
Absolutely. Anyone else want to comment on this? Just greatly appreciate the gift by uh, Marnie and Marie and and the late Lee Blair. This is uh, one, one day I I think there will be something wonderful on that property and we'll all be even more grateful. Right now it's raw land, uh, and and lots to do there and lots of ideas that'll come forward, but I think this is we we're very, very limited in the boundaries of the village of how we can expand here by the geography that we have. So um, that is on the sewer system and uh, on a, on a county road. So anyway, it's all great news and much appreciated. So I do need a mover and a seconder to receive this this update report. Uh, Counselor Wood Robertson, Counselor McKechnie? You're resolved that the committee, the whole acknowledges receipt of the update report on the status of the Blair land donation. And further, the supports the recommendation land transfer conditions outlined in the below report and direct staff to bring forward a bylaw to authorize the execution of the agreement to future council meeting. All in favor? Okay, and that's carried. So that concludes the open portion of our meeting and uh, we're going to move to go into closed. I believe, did counselors turn their screens off just for that few minutes there? Okay, um. I've got a resolution to go into closed, but as we go into closed, if anyone needs a five minutes, uh, quick bio break or something, go go right ahead until we get started, but I will move to go into close, so I'll look for that. Show, uh, Counselor Wood Robertson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Kennedy. We are resolved that the committee, the whole adjourn its regular meeting at eleven-thirty to discuss matters pursuant to section two thirty-nine, section two of Municipal Act two thousand and one as amended pertaining to a proposed disposition of land in the township of Harburn, known as Halliburton Lake Road property. Uh, secondly, a lit litigation or potential litigation including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board, which is an update on bylaw enforcement cases, and lastly, labor relations or employee negotiations COVID-nineteen protocols. All in favor? Okay, so we are now in closed and just turn your cameras off and be back in five minutes. Thank you. Carried.
I'm really sorry, guys, but I gotta go.
Well, we're just going to do adjournment. Do you want to wait to to just adjourn? Five minutes. That's all that's left on the agenda is, uh, there's no report coming out of closed session. Uh, so I just looked to see if there's any notice of motion. Uh, seeing none, so really, that's it. Do you want to move to adjourn then, Counselor McKechnie? Okay. Can I have a seconder for that? Uh, Counselor Donaldson? You're resolved that the committee, the whole adjourn its meeting, hold on October twelfth, twenty-twenty-one at one thirty-five P M. All in favor? Okay, that is carried and so we're, therefore we are adjourned. And enjoy the glorious afternoon. It's absolutely beautiful out there. Thanks, everyone. Thanks to all staff and counselors.
Thank you.
I know.